Our treaty history and that these lands are the original homelands of those nations where we of what now we call home. Today marks an important announcement, one that puts the safety and well-being of children first. Every child deserves a secure, supportive place to learn, grow, and thrive. When we invest in their safety, we invest in their future. To share more about this, please join me in welcoming the Premier of Manitoba, the Honorable Wob Canoe.
Thanks, Mike. I'm good, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Nothing else matters unless our kids are safe. What happened at Darwin School last week should never happen. Every child deserves to grow up free from harm and free to be who they are. My thoughts are with this child and their family. This child did everything right, and so did the parents. To the children at Darwin and around Manitoba who are worried, I want to speak to you. We just want to tell you that everything that happened, none of it was your fault. You did nothing wrong. In fact, when I heard what happened, I thought you did everything right, and thank goodness that you did. Most of all, to kids and to your parents, you deserve to be safe and happy. I also want to speak to parents out there, including the parents of this young child. You are right to trust that your kids will be safe at school. You're making the right decision every day when you send them to class so that they can grow and learn and that they can reach their full potential. And the expectation that when you send your child to school that they will be safe is a fundamental guarantee that our society must uphold and our government must make good on. To the teachers, to the staff, and to the school leaders out there, we'll be there to support you. We know that you care and that you go the extra mile for our kids. Now, the person who did this has something very wrong with them. They are in jail, where the justice system will deal with them. Schools in Manitoba are safe. We're making sure that there are supports for kids to talk to, for parents to reach out to, for school staff and admin and teachers to be able to be in contact with. And now, we're going to talk a bit about what we're going to do to make schools safer in the future here in Manitoba. Immediately, we have given money to the Manitoba School Boards Association for every school in Manitoba to look at their safety plans and do what needs to be done in light of what happened last week. We're encouraging schools to implement controlled access if they haven't already, and we're approaching this in a way that I think understands that the way a school in Wawanisa or Waboden responds to what happened last week might be different than a way a school in Winnipeg responds. We're also going to work with communities and with law enforcement across the province to support the presence of school resource officers in Manitoba as well as other security options that fit local needs. Students, community people, school staff, they all had a role in stopping what happened last week, but ultimately it was a police officer and security who stopped this bad guy. And so, school resource officers have a role. As your government, we are here with the simple message: Kids, you are safe at school. Parents, it is safe to send your kids to school. To school staff and teachers, we are going to protect you as well. And we do this because every child matters.
Thank you, Premier, for your continued support in protecting children in Manitoba. Next, I'd like to welcome the Minister of Education, Tracy Schmidt, to speak.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you, Premier Canoe. I want to begin by expressing my support for the student at Darwin School and their family. Speaking directly to the student, I'm just so impressed by your bravery and your courage, and I'm just very proud of your actions that day and since. I've spoken to the family and let them know that our entire government has their back. I also want to thank the community member who worked with police and security guards to have this individual arrested. This individual really exemplifies the best of us as Manitobans, the willingness to step up and do something when you know something's wrong. So, thank you so much to that community member. As a parent myself, when I send my kids to school, I expect them to be safe, and I want to be clear here today: Manitoba schools are safe. I've asked all school divisions to submit an emergency response plan to my department for review. This plan will include how they will control access at schools. Many schools in Manitoba are already doing this, and we're going to step in and help those that might need a little bit extra support. We are investing over $500,000 to fund safety assessments, safety training with police experts, and a cross-sector safety forum. This incident has made us all and school leaders certainly pause and reevaluate their safety practices and policies. So, we will bring leaders together, spearheaded by the Manitoba School Boards Association, to share best practices on how we can make kids' safety the very first priority. And I just want to thank the Manitoba School Boards Association for the incredible work that they already do in this regard and for helping us host this important announcement here today. These are very important steps, but these are also first steps. We will take every measure necessary to make sure that kids are safe. We're going to keep partnering with schools and school divisions to make sure that every Manitoba child can learn and grow in a safe and secure school from the moment they start kindergarten to the day that they graduate high school. To the Darwin School community, and specifically, again, to the child and the family that this happened to, we stand with you. We are going to keep being there for you in the days and weeks and months to come as you recover. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister Schmidt, for all that you're doing to protect students and to create safer learning environments for every child. Next, I'd like to invite the President of the Manitoba School Boards Association, Alan Campbell.
Thank you, Minister, and thank you, everyone, for being here this morning at Manitoba School Boards Association Headquarters. As a parent and as a school board trustee and certainly as President of MSBA, when I heard the news from Darwin School, I just had an immediate feeling of terror. How does this happen? And how do we reinforce so much of what's already been offered here this morning in terms of reassurances of safety and reinforcing the good work that staff, frontline staff, do in schools every day to make sure that students are safe? For school boards across Manitoba, the very most important priority that we have in our work when we get together to co-govern the system with the provincial government is that the safety and that the learning of students is priority number one. And so, the opportunity to partner today with the provincial government in a renewed focus on school safety is really important to us at the MSBA. I know I speak for all school boards across the province as well as our senior administration teams, that we look forward to digging into the details of today's announcement to make sure that the investments by the provincial government are put to the very best use that they can be in ensuring that the unique needs of community schools across the province are met and met in the most effective and the best way possible. So, once again, thank you again, everyone, for being here, and we do appreciate the opportunity for ongoing partnership with the provincial government. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our formal portion of today's events. I'd like to extend my thanks to all the speakers as well as everyone for coming today and marking this important announcement. We'll now open the floor for questions from the media.
Education Minister Schmidt, you said that you have spoken to the family of this child. How are they doing and what did they say that they love to see happen as a result of this incident?
Yeah, I hesitate to speak for them, but I think you can probably imagine how they're feeling. In fact, I think some of the first words I shared with them is, as a parent, I actually can't imagine how they're feeling. This is really the thing, these are the type of situations that nightmares are made of. These are the kind of situations that, as a parent, you don't let your, you try not to let your mind go to these places. So, yeah, we certainly empathize with the family. We know that they are still struggling and still in a bit of a state of disbelief as to how something like this could happen. But I think what's important is what we're here today talking about is that we are going to dig in. We also look forward to continuing our partnership with the Manitoba School Boards Association and every school division across this province to take an all-hands-on-deck approach. Nothing is off the table. We're going to make sure that we are doing everything that we can so that something like this never happens again to any family in Manitoba.
At Darwin's School, what kind of security measures does it have at its doors, specifically the main door, but all of its doors?
Yeah, so every school division in the province has to have an emergency preparedness plan. That plan has to include a policy and protocols about controlled access to the school. So, at Darwin School, I know there are control mechanisms and measures in place. Clearly, what was in place didn't work, and so, we need to make sure that we're working with that school division and every school division across the province to make sure that we're identifying whatever gaps might exist. We're here today, like, let me be clear. We are encouraging every single school division across Manitoba to strongly consider controlled access to their building.
But specifically on controlled access or controlled entrance, you're saying you want every door locked?
In some school communities, that might be the answer, yeah. School communities, again, we're looking very much forward to reviewing. Every school division, every school in this province has to, right now, today, have a policy in place about how they control access to their school. Right now, we're going to be asking all school divisions to work with their school communities to look at those, look at what those control mechanisms are today, whether or not they need to be enhanced today, and what we can do as a province to help them enhance those measures going forward.
I just want to get a sense of what you mean by the definition of controlled entrance, right?
Yeah, so, again, many school divisions are already there. So, what we see, we see a variety of different control mechanisms across the province. We see some school divisions that absolutely every single door is locked, and there might be access through a buzzer-type system. Some school divisions have a physical, like a supervisor at a door. Some school divisions have it where every school, pardon me, every door in the school is locked, but perhaps one entrance that might be classified as a main entrance that is supervised near an office. There's a variety of different mechanisms. Obviously, every school, the infrastructure and everything is going to require different needs, but we're here to work with school divisions and their school communities to make sure that we're looking at those plans and make sure that every single mechanism is available to make sure that, again, students are safe and parents can feel safe sending their kids to school every day, which they should.
Being more specific about Darwin, you said measures and mechanisms are in place there. What exactly is in place there or was in place there as of when that incident happened?
Yeah, my understanding is that the school does have a locked-door system. I personally don't have the details about exactly how this individual gained access to this school on this exact day. I know that those are answers that we're seeking today. I know that the school met this weekend. School leadership and senior administration at the school division have been hardworking all weekend to identify and to answer the questions that you're asking, and we're going to be here to work with them to do that.
If the school has a locked-door system where doors are locked, you've got intercom, you've got camera, you've got buzzer access, staff have to let somebody in, yet somebody could still potentially get in, how do you, what's the next step beyond that? How do you prevent somebody from like this, like this from getting inside a school?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, I think there's many tools on the table. I think something that we just heard the premier talk about and something that we've seen to some success in some schools, like Neeland School in Brandon, that there is a role potentially for school resource officers. But again, these are discussions that we need to be having at the school division level with the Manitoba School Boards Association and in local school communities to identify what the needs in those particular communities are.
Who pays for school resource officers?
Ultimately, these are all decisions made at the school board level. This is school division policy, which is set at the school board level. And as you know, the Manitoba government is a partner with school boards in how we fund and deliver education in the province.
Are they typically in one school full-time or do they cover multiple schools?
I think there's a variety of different implementations that schools and school divisions have with resource officers, so I don't think there's a sort of a one-size-fits-all approach, but nothing's off the table.
How much money is being provided for this? Is there an influx of money to the school boards association?
Yeah, today here, we're announcing a $500,000 investment in partnership with the Manitoba School Boards Association to make sure that we have security experts that are going to be working with schools across the province to identify their security needs with a specific focus on controlled access to schools.
Security experts, where, who, what, is that an organization or a specific person?
Those details are still being ironed out. I don't want to speak on behalf of the Manitoba School Boards Association. They are here, but I know that they are currently working on a contract with retired service personnel from the Winnipeg Police Service, so that's one resource. But again, these are plans that we've been developing furiously over the last, you know, 48, 72 hours. More details will be provided shortly.
Minister, you mentioned everything is on the table right now. Does that also include legislation? Because as far as I know, the public school currently is laying out more of a broad guidance because it is not one-size-fits-all. I'm wondering if there's like a bare minimum that the province can require all school divisions to at least have?
Yeah, I think nothing's off the table. Again, today, what we're here is we are directing school divisions to strongly consider the controlled access of their school. We need them to submit revised and updated plans to the province as soon as possible, certainly before Christmas, and we're going to be working with all of those schools and school divisions to identify the particular needs in their community. Something that you're talking about is certainly not off the table, but I think it's important to have some, a little bit of time and opportunity to work with our partners in the sector to land on the best policy.
For yourself or for the premier, I guess, based on what you know about this incident and then also mainly about the suspect, should there have been any kind of community notification about this person?
Yeah, I think that's pretty obvious. We're taking action on that as well. I think there's a very important public service responsibility that we all have, media included, today to reassure students and parents at schools in Manitoba are safe. But if you want to do a press conference tomorrow on the justice angle of this incident, I'd be happy to answer any and all questions.
Is there something you can announce today on what those events could be?
I'll just point out that there's an important public service to be done by reassuring kids across Manitoba that's safe to go to school. And parents, you're doing the right thing when you send kids to school.
Mr. Premier, respectfully, was this incident a bit of a wake-up call when it comes to the security, are in close to schools in Manitoba and Winnipeg?
Nothing matters unless kids are safe in our communities. It's the most important thing. I think all of us understand as a parent, when we are sending our kids to school, there's trust there. We're trusting that our kids are going to come home safe at the end of the day, and anytime something like this happens, it means that we have to learn from this. We have to be there to support and to reassure this child that she did the right thing, she did nothing wrong. We have to reassure the parents, they did the right thing sending their child to school. And part of the way that we show that is saying the message, but also taking action to show that schools are safe. And so, controlled access is an important part of it. School resource officers are another element. The safety plans are an additional element. So, there's many, many steps that we take. Anytime something in the community happens to harm a person, especially a child, we have to respond.
Why wasn't this individual, the accused, listed on the provincial website for sex endangerment?
He should have been.
In a light of pleasant...
No, I don't. But again, you know, respectfully, I think the media has a role to play in getting a message that schools are safe out today. If you want to do a press conference tomorrow on the justice side of this, I will happily answer any and all questions. But today, controlled access, school resource officers, enhanced safety plans. Every school in Manitoba should be thinking about a locked doors policy, and we need to just send a message today that schools are safe, kids are safe to go to school, and parents, you're doing the right thing by sending your kids to school.
What is, what is the answer, just using this suspect as an example? There's a pattern of offending or troubling behavior?
Yeah, I think I'm going to anticipate where you're going with this. We're talking about making schools safe right now. If you want to talk about making the broader community safe, I will gladly fill the rest of the week with things that we're going to do.
The question was going to be, what's the answer when you have somebody like that? And maybe there's nothing that will stop them in the future.
I can't, like, I think everybody here knows how I feel. My responsibility as a premier is to let kids know that you're safe. We're going to protect you. Your parents are going to protect you, your government's going to protect you, the people at school are going to protect you, and your police service is going to protect you.
Do you expect that, in light of this incident, that some parents will disagree, that they don't think their kids are safe as they thought they would be at school?
Schools are safe in Manitoba, and the action that we're taking today reaffirm our shared commitment, whether you're an administrator, a teacher, somebody who works in a school, government, parent, everybody, we're all committed to having safe schools.
I'm sorry, the $500,000, that's a starting point for this funding if it seems like there's more money that's needed to, you know...
Yeah, and this has to be done by Christmas, guys. I know we're asking a lot of you, but let's do this by Christmas, okay? If it doesn't get done by Christmas, it's going to drag on and on and on and on. We're coming out with this money now for every school to reexamine your school safety plans, your emergency plans. Divisions have a role to play here, making sure that there's the right resources, but we got to do this quickly.
And that's for the review and for implementing any safe buzzer systems?
Yeah, I mean, the minister has an ability to make a directive today, but we recognize that the way a school in Roblin responds to this news might look different than a school in South Winnipeg. I don't know, maybe it's the same. Is there anything wrong with having locked doors at a school in Roblin? I can't think of any, but people who live there deserve to have some time to have their input. So, that's why we're saying, let's give a bit of time, divisions, local school leaders, parents, everybody, let's work together. What's the right approach here? It seems like funneling everybody to one door, and then, you know, you make the door, the decision whether there's an intercom and a locked door there. It seems like that makes sense. I think kids know, kids are told every day they have to use a specific door, whether it's for recess or lunch or what have you. So, I think kids get that. I think, you know, the rest of the community would be able to get around that in the name of safety. And that's just one, that's just one example. There's a lot of more things we can do, but the main thing is, we just love kids in Manitoba. We want them to be safe. This is our future generation, and there's a sacred bond between a parent and a child, and the role of the school and the government is to foster that and to enhance that. And the actions that were taken today are designed to show through actions, as well as the words that we're sharing of encouragement for this family and for other kids out there, that schools are safe, and we're going to keep working with you to make them safer in the future.
Maybe this question is for the education minister, but I was wondering if the Ministry of Education has thought about introducing like a safety class for schools so that, you know, kids can be like regularly told what to do in any...
Can I just start this?
Please.
This child did everything right.
Yes, absolutely.
This child did nothing wrong. Like this, this is a terrible thing that happened, you know? I remember when I was a kid, way, 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 way back in the land of VHS tapes and pick-a-pop. We used to get these presentations about child abuse and stuff like that, and for sure, educators and, you know, experts will have a way better vocabulary to describe this, but what I learned when I was a kid about what to look out for didn't match up with how I understood the world at the time. So, for sure, like, we'll do whatever it takes around helping kids to understand their environment, but the responsibility is on us collectively, as a government, as a school board, as a school, as the community, to make sure that the schools are safe. And so, that's why we're saying, we're calling on this action immediately, but we're willing to be flexible around implementation, because we know that there does need to be that little bit of input and back and forth in terms of how do you tailor this exactly right for the kids? But yeah, definitely, turn it over to the minister.
Yeah, I think, just echoing what the premier is saying, I think that despite this being a horrific tragedy, I think that the way that it unfolded and the response of the student actually shows the success of the way that we are educating children. Again, I'm a mom, I've got three kids in school, I'm very familiar with the sort of, the sort of lessons that they, I mean, obviously, there are school lockdown drills, the school divisions, the Manitoba School Boards Association has done a lot of great work over the years to help educate not only students but also teachers and school administrators about safety in the schools. So, again, certainly more work to do, but again, I think that the student's response, the school's response, the community's response really shows that we've got some mechanisms that are really working here. And again, we're so very proud of this student, the school, the school community, and the greater community, again, this, this, you know, good Samaritan that followed this individual and ended up in their capture. So, we're very grateful for how this unfolded ultimately.
Is it common, I don't know if you can give us a idea, how often do reports come in of somebody unauthorized, whether they're malicious intent or not, just in school, like, someone's in the hallway, we don't know who this person is?
As far as, I mean, I don't have specific numbers. It's not something that's often reported into our department. Generally, we would receive reports that would end in something like a lockdown where the school had to actually be locked down if there were a serious incident, if it ended in an arrest. Sometimes there are incidents where people come into school and it ends without an incident, and we wouldn't be made aware of those situations always, but I think this is a pretty unique incident. As the premier has said, I think what parents and students need to know today is that schools ultimately are really safe places. This incident certainly signs a spotlight on the need to do more and make sure that we are revisiting the protocols and policies that are in place to see if we need to enhance them. But ultimately, we're here today to remind Manitoba students, to remind the Darwin School community that schools are safe places to be, and you have a government that's going to do everything that they can in partnership with our school boards to make sure that we're doing everything that we can.
Do you have any concerns about more SRO officers, there was a study in 2021 that said it can negatively impact minority students?
I know there's different opinions out there in the community about school resource officers, but again, I agree with the premier that I think school resource officers have a role to play in Manitoba. And as I mentioned in my comments, we saw the fantastic role that school resource officers can play. We saw that play out just in June in Brandon at Acol Neeland Secondary High School, where we saw a school resource officer intervene and save, ultimately likely saved a student's life, maybe many students' lives. So, school resource, school resource officers have a role to play. Our government supports the role that they have to play, and we look forward to working with school divisions to see how we can enhance that role, if that's what the school community deems is necessary.
What's the message to students who sound like maybe going back to a school that looks a little different after the Christmas break? If there are new implementations as a result of this work, is it going to be done?
I think, as the premier said, I think kids get it. I think something that me and one of the trustees were just talking about here is that this is not something that is completely, completely unique in schools. We have school divisions across this province. Many school divisions already have locked-door policies. Many school divisions that don't have locked-door policies for their K-12 sector have childcare centers in their schools that have locked-door policies as a matter of policy and as a matter of regulation and law. So, this is not something that is unfamiliar or foreign to students. I think students want to go to school to hang out with their friends and to learn from their teachers and to feel safe and included, and we're going to make sure that we strike that balance.
Okay, do we have other questions?
Yeah, on a different subject, Premier. I understand you were at the Brady Road landfill today for a ceremony, what happened there this morning and how did you feel?
At about 8:45 a.m. today, the first truckload of landfill material drove down the hill at the Brady Road landfill, and searchers began their work to look for Ashley Shingus. I was there this morning to smoke the pipe with her parents, Albert and Teresa, as well as her sister Bonnie, who is working on the search, and, you know, just partially there to offer some morale boost, I guess, to the people who are going to be carrying out this important work. And then, it's an important bond that these parents have with their child that they're trying to bring home in a very tragic situation as a result of a very terrible crime. And so, the role that I have as a premier is to try and show the understanding and compassion that we as a province have for them as they go through this. And it's very meaningful to be out there in prairie sunrise in winter morning and to see the landscape and, you know, you know what it's like when the cold winds are blowing across our prairies and to just see the effort and structure and resources that are being brought to bear here. I just told her parents, like, I hope you feel that this is the value and the respect and the dignity that we hold for your daughter, and I hope, I hope we're able to bring her home and bring her home soon. So, I think they're, they're very emotional. Typically, I think in the media, you've interviewed Albert a lot and rightfully so, but this morning, it was some of the words that Teresa shared that really, really stood out, and she just talked about how long it's been and, you know, how emotional it was, trying to get some answers and be able to grieve her daughter in a way that any of us would should we ever be put into such an unfortunate position.
Can you talk a little bit about how this search for work, is that the details about Green's, Greens, so any similarities?
Very similar. Very similar, very similar, actually. Walking around the trailers and the search facility, it looks very similar to the setup that we had at Prairie Green landfill. And one of the family members from one of the other families, like at Prairie Green, was on site today, and they pointed out that today is three years to the day from when they found out. So three years ago, we as Manitobans were just starting to enter the search the landfill conversation. One year ago, we were starting the search at Prairie Green, which was ultimately successful in bringing home Mercedes and Morgan. And now today, we have begun the search in the most intense phase for Ashley Shingus, which I hope is successful. But more than anything, it just shows that we're a province that does what we say. Somebody goes missing, we go looking.
Can you speak to the, like, the size of the search area and color some of the logistics and that?
Yeah, so this landfill is different from Prairie Green, and the amount of material is, of course, different because we're talking about different depths and stuff like that. But the overall process is very similar. We have up to now conducted test searches to figure out where to narrow down our efforts. We've pulled off a layer of landfill material that we refer to as the overburdened material and stored that at a different location, and now we're pulling from the targeted zone, bringing that down the hill and using the same search facility that we used at Prairie Green, which we've relocated to this site. And we have teams of searchers just methodically working through the landfill material. This is the same process that brought Morgan and Mercedes home. Now hopefully we'll bring Ashley home. We've just done some tweaks and maybe some specific tailoring of what that process looks like, given the Brady site. And so here, I want to thank the city of Winnipeg and their, their staff, like, your expertise has been amazing in getting us to this point. And the Winnipeg Police Service has been a very, very strong partner in this. They'll have people on site throughout. And then, of course, you know, it's the family that we're thinking of today.
How long do you anticipate, I guess, the search for Ashley Shingus to last? And then, you know, there's the hope of searching for Tanya Nipanak after that.
Yeah, you know, we are thinking about this in terms of, well, first of all, I hope we find Ashley right away. And I think we were very fortunate that we were able to get the news about Mercedes and Morgan when we did. Even though that, those two, those few months felt like a long time when they were happening, in hindsight, you know, everything moved along. So I hope that this family is able to get the same news. We are budgeting for, you know, a year at this time, but also like thinking it in terms of six month chunks, if you will. So I, I'd say that this initial effort that we're undergoing right now, the expectation is we're gonna do this first six months. We have the resources to continue doing that. And I'll remind everyone, it's, it's the same dollars from before, right? We were dramatically under budget on the Prairie Green search, so we're just using the same, same budget to do this additional search. And we're proceeding sequentially, meaning hopefully we'll be able to bring Ashley home and do this effort. And then from there, mount a search for Tanya Nipanak. But because the amount of time and the location are different, the search for Tanya will probably look different than what the search for Ashley looks like today as we start.
The, just to move to a different matter, the sobering center on Israelis, is that open yet?
I believe so. It was supposed to open today. We can confirm 100%, like, I've been at the landfill and I've been here, so sorry, I don't have a specific answer for you on that. But it was supposed to open today.
Yeah, and close to the end of the month, if I said end of the month, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, we're, you know, I was joking with Ian last week, I was gonna stretch your guys' definition of end of the month, you know? Just like the, you know, Black Friday has been stretched into mid-November. Maybe I shouldn't joke about this, but you know what I'm saying.
There was some criticism over the weekend from a senator from Ontario likening this facility to a jail. What would you say in response to that, that comment for that kind of criticism?
So we have the experts, like the doctors who are the experts in addictions medicine, designing this treatment intervention. This is healthcare for people who are not in a position to care for themselves and who are quite often causing problems in our community. And we have a moral responsibility to help them, as well as to help the broader community. So we've been turning to the experts and they're, they're helping us. And again, every time we take action as a government, specifically on something like trying to get meth and the issues caused by meth addictions off our street, we have to remember that our actions are not taking place in a vacuum. People may have seen images of this site, and they may have a story that they want to tell. Like, I've seen tons of commentary on Facebook, but you need to go look at the drunk tank right now. It's a dungeon. There's no, there's no senators or no outcry talking about where we currently take intoxicated people. So the only reason I say that is because it's all relative. If you go to the current drunk tank and then you look at this new facility, you'll be like, wow. Look at all the resources and look at all the care that's being put into helping people who are in a really, really tough frame of mind, but also stage of life. So, yeah, I mean, people are going to criticize this, but my responsibility is to keep you safe in the community. And I think everyone in Manitoba agrees that meth has caused too much damage in our province, and it is time to take action. And it's the, you know, if you want to argue against 72 hours, go argue with meth. Because it's not me that decided that it's gonna mess people up for 72 hours. It's the drug that decided that. So criticism, yeah, we're politicians, for sure. Criticize us. But we have a responsibility to keep the community safe. That includes the people who are going to be offered care in this facility, and we are going to live up to that responsibility. Because, yeah, safety is paramount. We love healthcare, we love education, but unless safety is there first, those other things don't happen.
Correct me if this changed, this, this facility is starting with alcohol detentions, and then eventually it'll be, we'll bring in drug-related detentions. Do you know when, when that'll happen, when drug-related detentions will start then?
Soon as the doctors will let us.
Let's hold it up.
We were talking about expertise and a medical approach to caring for people. It's pretty fascinating, actually, to listen to the doctors. And maybe this is probably the strongest proof that I could offer, that we're not just like lock them up and throw away the key or whatever people are trying to caricature us as doing. We have physicians who are saying, like, we want to very carefully intervene with people in a healthcare setting and build up a statistically significant body of interactions with these people to have a very methodical protocol when it comes to caring for people in this facility at 190. Meaning, we want to see N, right? In the study sense of the word N, be large enough that we know with a high degree of confidence, if someone is under meth psychosis and they're exhibiting these symptoms, it is in fact treatable by these interventions, rather than these other ones. And so some of the hand-holding, if you will, or caution, or judiciousness being exercised by the physicians is in the name of the safety of the people who are going to be cared for and provided medical attention. And so when you're thinking about somebody, you know, like yelling on a street corner, and you're like, who's that person yelling at? And then you look and there's no one there, on the other side of the road. You see that and you're like, okay, we gotta do something right now. But then when you talk to the physicians and, you know, who are gonna be advising, the paramedics and nurses as well, who are also gonna be caring for these people, you understand, like, well, yeah, no, it makes sense, you know? When does someone actually need to go to an emergency room versus 190? What are the specific medications that are gonna be used, in what situations? In which scenario does somebody look like they're in serious medical distress, but it's actually just acting up, right? And so this whole body of evidence definitely exists out there, but, you know, one of the things that I'm sure anybody with a science background will tell you is that you can't generalize across populations. And we have a very unique and vulnerable population in Manitoba, which is part of the reason why the meth epidemic is so damaging here. And we need to take the time to get it right. So, yeah, I mean, this is an important intervention. And the fact that it's grounded in healthcare is proven by the fact that we're taking the step, steps to roll this thing out. If this was not grounded in healthcare, we would have opened it the second that the rooms were ready, which was weeks ago at this point, right? So hopefully that gives people some, some confidence. At the end of the day, we just gotta keep people safe, and the meth stuff has gone on long enough. And until we get some sort of cure-all, we're gonna have to take a very painstaking approach that's still grounded in compassion, but it's compassion for everybody. It's not just compassion for the person who's on the rock bottom. It's compassion for you driving by. It's compassion for the people at the bus stop. It's compassion for the kids walking home from school. So we gotta balance all those considerations together.
Okay, are there any questions?
Just one more thing in terms of school safety, like, we talked about, you know, child going, the child going through the horrifying, traumatic experience. I was wondering if you have any comments for the educators and staff members who are working in the school? Like, obviously, they, they also probably would be traumatized about this experience. Is there any comment you can offer to that?
Yeah, no, in my opening comments, I did, for sure, but just to revisit, you know, the, so, okay. So Darwin School is famous for many things, you know, it's obviously a hub for that part of St. Vitale. Real, but St. Vitale, okay? And the Dolphins, right? If you've ever been in their gym, you know what I'm talking about. This gym is also open for basketball. This is like community basketball, community club and club basketball. They play a ton of games at Darwin School. So the school's an important part of the community, whether you're actually one of the parents and kids or you're just part of the broader Winnipeg and Manitoba. And so I got a ton of compassion. I had the opportunity to speak to a school leader over the weekend. And, you know, and I think Principal Enz is doing a great job and showing a ton of courage and leadership. She's doing it with compassion and understanding for the reality that this is a gentle time for the parents and kids that she's worked with, as well as their staff. And she's gonna have to be patient, and not everything's gonna happen on day one. Things are gonna play out over time. And so for the, the staff, you know, just keep your head up, keep morale high. We've got your back. You know, we want to make sure that you have the support to be able to do what you do best, which is to help young people learn and to learn the individual approaches necessary for each child. Anyway, you got a couple of experts right here in here, if you want to hear more encouragement for schools.
Okay, maybe we'll wrap it up there.
Oh, sir, just, just quick with the online search. Do you know how many staff are involved?
So I think we got an arrangement of three teams. I don't want to steer you wrong, because there's been some last-minute changes around the compliment, but we can get you that offline, yeah. That's definitely something we can, we can share.
There was a building at Prairie Green for the victims' families that's no longer there. Has it been moved to Brady or?
No, actually. So there is a space at Brady for the family, but it's right on that main area where the workers and searchers are having their lunch or getting changed and stuff like that. And the reason why we did that is that is actually what we would have done at Prairie Green, but we were limited by that site's configuration. In this case, the city of Winnipeg owns the site, and so we have a lot more flexibility. So, yeah, so we're, we're doing that. We, in terms of the building that you're asking about, we, we talked to family members for both Morgan and Mercedes. And we went through a bunch of options, and eventually they, they just wanted to see this facility help people in the community. So I'm not sure, I'm not being totally clear there, because I'm not sure when we talked to them, if we had decided whether or not to share the details publicly. But, yeah, the building was moved off-site, and it's, you know, the, the way it moved off-site helped the broader community, I'll say for now. And maybe after I get a chance to check in with them, we might be able to share some more, or not, as the arrangement may have been.
Will we also be getting regular updates on this search as it was conducted with the Prairie Green search?
Yeah, I think so. You know, the Prairie Green search was, there was so much attention paid to it for understandable reasons. It had been politicized, but then it also became this national news story in its own right. And so as a result, we, we felt, you know, we had a responsibility to provide those bulletins as well as press conferences. But if you go back to that time, a lot of the bulletins that we put out were to do with stages that we've already accomplished on the Brady search. And if you can cast your minds back to this time, we were in a period where people were still wondering if, if we were gonna search the landfill, right? So that's why we felt we had to put those bulletins out, just to show regular progress. But I may be, I may be wrong, but I think once we started the, this fourth stage of the search, as we have done today, I don't know if we put out another update until we found remains a few months later. So, yes, you can expect regular updates, but you may not see anything until one of those next stages is hit. And hopefully, yeah, hopefully we have the news that the family is looking for soon.
Okay, why don't we leave it there?
Okay, well, thanks so much, everyone.